I call the planning board meeting for May 2, 2023 to order at 6:00 PM. There we go. First item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. We do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Next item on the agenda is public comment. I don't see anybody wanting to comment on anything besides what we're dealing with tonight, so we'll move on. Minutes for 4/20/23, they were emailed to you last Wednesday. I don't know if everybody, anybody had a chance to read them. Do we have any additions, subtractions, corrections? Any comments? If not, I want to take a motion to approve the minutes of 4/20/23 as written. You can't make the motion.
Oh, I didn't make the motion. I was just looking at you. I was waiting for somebody else to.
I actually didn't see him. I didn't see him yet, so I can't.
Oh, okay, well. You can still make the motion to accept them as written.
I will make a motion to accept them.
Unless you want to accept them as written.
No, he's not here, no.
Okay, does anybody want to make a second? Oh, yeah, that's right, you weren't there.
I second it.
Okay, Amanda seconds it. Again, any comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so they are accepted as written. Okay, very good. We have three more minutes before the hearing and so if no objection, I'll jump down to the planning assistance grant letter of support.
So the planning assistance grant letter of support is a letter, what we're going to do is we're going to, through MRPC, we're going to be applying for a grant with your blessing to work on zoning bylaws even further, working on all the other chapters of zoning. And it's a two-year grant. The application date is in July of this year. So we just need a blessing that we can move forward with applying for that grant. And once, once I have the letter, I will, you know, have you sign it if you do so agree.
Okay, so we don't, you haven't put together the letter?
Haven't put the letter together, together yet. Yeah, Karen and I are working on that.
Okay, do I have any comments on this? Does anybody have any objections to us applying to the MRPC for assistance?
Planning assistance grant.
Planning assistance in continuing with our redoing of the bylaws? And they will probably, with the material that we've already done, that can be passed over to them probably?
Yes, yeah, that can be incorporated in.
So they won't have to reinvent the wheel or, you know, that thing's great. Okay, and again, the letter. We could have Nicole write it and then bring it to the next meeting so everybody can read it.
Yes.
Or if there is any problem, or if nobody has an objection, you can make a motion that we send a letter asking for grant assistance and have the chairman sign it and send it out. Otherwise, you can bring it back. What's the pleasure of the board and of the probably, the motion maker?
I'll make a motion to accept.
We send a letter asking for assistance. Now, do you want it to come back to the board at the next meeting? Or just want to authorize the chair to sign it or anybody else?
I make the motion and it comes back to me, just so that we can look at it and say, okay.
Okay, very good.
That we will do.
Okay, so, and we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have no minutes left. So it is 6:05 and it is time for the public hearing that was advertised. Okay, and what I will do is instead of mentioning it, I will read the public hearing notice and then open the hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Winchonan Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 2, 2023 at 6:05 to review and discuss the renumbering and revision of the town of Winch-
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Chair, do you have the wrong planning board hearing notice?
Yeah, wrong notice.
Wrong notice, okay. Hang on one second, let's get you the right one.
Oh, that's from our last meeting. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll try again. Okay, public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given that the Winchonan Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 2, 2023 at 6:05 PM to consider the request for a storm management permit and site plan approval for a property identified as Winchonan Assessors Map 5A2 parcel 25 and 26 owned by Boswick Realty Trust. Petition, petitioner ZB Battery Devco LLC of 1 Mercantile Street, Suite 630, Worcester, Mass. 01606. Stormwater management, management permit and site plan approval request for construction of a solar energy storage system with associated site improvements. Said property is located in the I Industrial District. The hearing will be held in the second floor auditorium of the Winchonan Town Hall, 109 Front Street. Information is available in the Winchonan Planning and Development Office. All interested persons should plan to attend. Alternative translations and accommodations are available by advanced request by contacting the Planning and Development Department at least three days in advance. And with the reading of the public notice, I call this hearing open at 6:07 PM. Okay, very good. I guess would the applicants like to come up? Could you sign in on the sheet and announce your names?
Is there a good spot to set up a board or are you going to pull up on?
If you want to set it up right there, do you all agree that I'll be able to see it right there? Do you want it to come in closer?
Please. No, I think generally familiar, I don't know if anybody else does. I can't see it, but I can see the outline. I know it's there, there's a bunch of squiggly stuff there, but. Now, do we have that on the, what he'll be showing us there on the computer? Now, while she's looking for that, could you introduce yourselves?
Certainly. Good evening, Tom Corbett, Zero Point Development, ZB Battery Devco. I've got Chris Anderson here with Hanigan Engineering as well.
Okay, very good, and you did sign in on the sheet?
Yes, sir.
All I have to do on a public hearing is swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Please let us know what we're doing here.
Certainly.
One thing I do have to mention is that you do have to go through conservation. So the usual way these things work is conservation is a major part of this. So we will be continuing this hearing at the end of the evening till after conservation makes their decisions. But we wanted to get an overview of what this is because this is the first type of installation or the first installation of this type that we've had to deal with. So we're kind of, don't know what's going on.
Certainly, maybe you should start and then I'll do the, you want to do that? And I'll just get into the system after because it's most of the material.
To note you're on TV, so please speak into the mic and we're all a bunch of old guys, so we can hear well.
Great, great. So the project is for a solar battery storage system. The property is located on either side of Murdock Ave at the terminal end. This is a pretty much a one-road system that goes out into the rear portion of 256 Murdock Ave. Currently, the area that we're proposing to develop is vacant. It's a develop, it's a predominantly a woodland area. We have several areas that bordering vegetated wetlands, so we have the associated buffer zones. The conservation filing has been made, so that process is going forward as the chair had just mentioned. Nicole, can you go to the next sheet, please?
Yep.
So it's the intent to construct eight concrete pads that will store the energy storage system, which Tom will go into in a moment, going over that entire process. Access to this area will be provided by a gravel driveway, which will provide a sort of a jug handle configuration along Murdock Ave with three points of entrance, one on the south side, north side, and the middle. This allows sufficient access for emergency vehicles and maintenance vehicles as necessary to get in and around the site in order to gain access to the battery storage systems themselves. Each one of these areas is split into two with four pads in each area. Each area will be surrounded by a chain link fence with security knock boxes. So if anybody does need to get into there, they can, but prevents any not critical personnel from entering into the facility such as a child or whatever we want to be. We're providing a series of plantings along Murdock Ave to provide a little bit of a visual buffer to maintain the feel of that roadway as much as humanly possible. Stormwater from the area will be captured by a series of catch basins, which will direct runoff to the opposite side of Murdock Ave to a small rain garden, which is the size to provide the accommodation for stormwater management and providing full compliance with that. And I believe that's going through review with Ty and Bond at this point in time as well. That's pretty much it from a civil perspective. I will hand it off to Tom and he can go over a little more in-depth onto the battery storage system itself.
Just for one quick question, so this is before Saloon Furniture on the left-hand side?
The system would be on the right. If you're going up the road to Saloon, the system would be on the right. The runoff's going to the left side.
Oh, so the system's on the right, see now I have the other side there. Thank you for pointing it out, the same side that the Pearl Street Housing-
Correct.
-project is for the redevelopment authority. Okay, so what we're looking at this is the, as I'm looking at this and you probably see the same thing there, the bottom is south. Wait, no, let's see, no, the bottom is north and the top is south.
Opposite, opposite. Yep, the bottom is the south, is south. So the bottom is down towards, what's that maple? Is that maple?
Pearl Street.
Pearl Street, sorry, yeah. Yeah, Pearl Street would be to the south from the bottom of that sheet.
I'm just going to have to look at this. Please go on in the meantime.
Certainly, so the, this is an energy storage system. So Massachusetts right now has shifted focus from large-scale solar to battery energy storage systems. And with that, they created the Clean Peak Energy Standard, which kind of replaces the smart solar initiative. And it focuses on one co-locating generation with storage and also for standalone storage for grid reliability and resiliency. So these systems here, as Chris mentioned, they are fully surrounded by a seven-foot tall fence. All the equipment is on concrete pads. So when you look at each individual one, you see the four big blocks. Those are the battery containers themselves and they go back to back. So there are two on each concrete pad. And then in front of those to, well, up to the north of those are inverters and transformers as well as a meter and a recloser. These systems connect to the grid very similar to how a solar field connects. Just typical, either three poles, but we're doing pad mount here. So we've got an air brake as well as a meter. There's actually two sets of each there for the two systems. And there's a secondary service that comes in for the live feed for the system itself, for its operating. The other one is for the in and out of energy to be stored. So, actually, I'm going to flip this around just because this is going to help us out here. I'm not sure if you can see this very well. But this is kind of a picture depiction of what the system looks like here. The containers are individually containerized. Like I said, they go back to back. They are only accessible from one, one side. So where the containers meet each other, where the doors meet and face each other, the units are separated by 10 feet. These systems are liquid cooled versus an air-cooled system. I don't, not sure if you guys have much up here for batteries on solar fields at all yet. But historically through time, they've mostly been an air-cooled system. Technology has changed in, in that aspect and they've encompassed a liquid cooling into all of these containers in order to, one, for safety and two, for the efficiency factor of the batteries themselves and the way that they charge and discharge and creating heat and dissipating heat. So they are also equipped with a smoke alarm, heat alarm, gas alarm. Each container on the bottom has a secondary containment measure that acts as pretty much a catch pan for anything that were to ever possibly leak out of a coolant system. That, that pan holds 243% of the 43 gallons of the system capacity for the coolant. Aside from that, very similar to what we've, what we see out there now on the solar side of things as far as equipment that, on this picture here up on the screen anyway, as far as equipment that helps this connect to the grid. And I think I'll leave it at that and let you, well, I guess I'll touch on the sprinkler system. So each pipe, each container has a pipe plumbed to it that goes outside of the gate. So each container has an individual two-and-a-half-inch pipe that will be plumbed directly to the container and plumbed outside of the gate to a, a type of manifold where it would have all eight pipes that a fire department would have a connection for. In the event that anything was to go wrong, that is a worst-case scenario is supplying water. Right now, guidance is not to do that. But to finish off the sprinklers inside the container, there are eight separate sprinkler heads in each containment area. And when I reference containment area, I reference it because the first door of the container has the liquid cooling system and there's a two-hour fire rating wall. And then there's three racks of batteries as depicted up here on the right. And then there's another fire-rated wall. And then there's the DC-to-DC converters that help the power movement and another fire-rated wall. And then another container, three doors of energy storage battery racks. So the breakdown of energy within the system is a big safety factor. The separation of power, the ability to have two separate containment areas. For fire safety-wise, these systems all meet NFPA 855, which is the compliance codes for energy storage systems and standalone stationary storage as well as UL 9540. So there's a lot of testing, there's a lot of certifications that go into these systems when they're used on this scale. Batteries, you can't just use any kind of battery. Batteries have to be sourced from a reputable company such as CATL, C-A-T-L, or BYD. They're big lithium-ion phosphate battery manufacturers. So lithium-ion batteries come in many different forms. They come in about seven different chemistries right now. This chemistry is a lithium-ion phosphate, it's a solid battery. There are no heavy metals in it. So the safety and the environmental factor are there for this particular technology or chemistry rather of lithium-ion batteries. So each battery container has a battery management system. The battery management system has three different levels. It has a cellular level, it has a module level, and it has a system level. So that tracks the temperature of the cells, that tracks the temperature of the module, that tracks thresholds such as voltage, things of that nature. There's hundreds, if not thousands, of data points that are collected in certain incremental milliseconds and it learns as it goes. Each one of, each one of these modules inside the container, which there are 48 modules in each container, they're plumbed with a coolant line that has a, what do you want to call it? Solenoid that calls or rejects, just like a car does, right? With a, with a thermostat, it calls or rejects for the coolant to cycle through. So there's, there's things like that that the battery management systems track. It also is set up to, if there is a fault, it calls us as an operator for maintenance, depending on what the fault is. If it, if it sees two faults, no matter if it's a fire safety thing or not, it also triggers an alarm to the fire department, a call to the fire department. There will be audible alarms and visual alarms on these systems for that purpose as well. So there was kind of a lot there, so I think I'll put it back to you guys if you guys have any specific questions that I could better answer.
Well, Les, do you have some questions that you might turn it over to? Okay, whoever wants to go first.
My remarks are not intended to discourage Hanigan Engineering. They're a good outfit, I'm familiar with them, or the Saloon people. However, I took a good look at this. For example, liability insurance. Liability insurance. The company is in Houston, Texas. Do they have a license to do business in Massachusetts? Doesn't say so. Secondly, medical expenses, any one person, $10,000? Costs you $10,000 to walk into the door? I certainly object to that. Another problem I have is engineers have a habit these days of not putting elevations on their plans. I know what the elevation is out there. And the elevation where your batteries are and where Bro's Pawn is is quite substantially different. Another point I want to make is the engineers did a good job of showing the location. But in the southerly section of this particular job is 35 apartments, 50 adults, 85 children. And you people never even saw it. I don't see how you posit because miss it because it's within 100 yards of all your batteries. And it's a Pearl Drive Housing Project. I, I find this basically totally unacceptable. Lithium ion. If you've read the papers lately, you'll see the city of New York, especially the city of New York is trying to unload that because they have lost several people, started several fires, and let's go. Lithium ion makes the batteries go. They really make the batteries go, especially in the summer. You know, that's why we're here tonight to get some of these things ironed out. For the life of me, I can't understand an engineering firm like this not having elevations on a set of plans like that. I just can't. All they got to do is get a USGS app. Don't even have to go, you know, and take a look at it. So, I mean, these are my problems, but my biggest problem is lithium ion. I will not support this project and I will take it to a town meeting if I have to if this particular project causes the taxpayer to have to order or pay for any more equipment with the local fire department to take care of things like this. Batteries, when they go, when they go, they, they either go flat or they go high, real high. So this is something basically that can't blame the owner, not at all. You know, Mass Electric is looking for a juice every time you turn around and this is what this is all about. They are going to sell juice to Massachusetts Electric. That's fine, I don't have a problem about it. But I think everybody's backside should be covered, whether it's the fire department, whether it's a housing project, whether it's the neighbors, or whether it's the drainage. And you might want to ask Public Works basically about the drainage out of Bro's Pawn. You might be terribly surprised. These are my concerns and so on and so forth. And, you know, in no way infringes on the good job engineering that they have done. They've slipped up a couple of places and so on and so forth, but that goes with the turf. That's why you're here. And so, Paul, to get these things corrected. This is how Bert feels and I'm not changing my mind until they're corrected. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bert. Nicole, has the police chief reviewed these or will he be?
That's what I was just looking, because I couldn't, obviously it wanted me to download something special. I will read you what Fire Chief Tom Smith said. Brian Vane, who he's the deputy at the fire department, and I have reviewed the solar battery storage project. We would be looking for them to follow the 2023 version of the NFPA 855. This would include the complete code, including signage, impact protection, security fencing, fire alarm, and sprinkler system. We would also be looking for them to have a Knox box at their primary entrance. As these projects come to town, we will also be looking to the town to ask these agencies to assist us in putting in electric- As these projects come to town, we will also be looking to the town to ask these agencies to assist us in putting an electric response trailer. This would include specialized equipment directly related to firefighting in battery storage facilities as well as electric vehicles. Any questions? Please do not hesitate to reach out to either myself or Brian Vane, Tom. That was from the fire chief.
So as, as I'm hearing there, right now, we don't have the capacity.
We do not have the capacity to fight a fire, no.
The equipment, okay, very good. So they would need the equipment.
Yes.
Did he submit it in writing?
Yes, he did. That was an email that he sent on um.
Okay, thank you.
On Wednesday, April twenty-sixth.
Fire chief, I asked if the fire chief submitted it in writing.
Be an email.
Okay, do you have any comments so far, Mr. Gould?
I can comment on the fire part of it if you'd like. Um so.
Think it'd be helpful.
Battery fires in lithium ion phosphate batteries are, one, extremely rare. Um two, um batteries lithium ion. Lithium ion batteries don't explode. Um they off gas and they catch fire. And when they catch fire. So through an electrical short, um one individual cell inside of one of those modules. Which it holds, I believe, a hundred and sixty-six cells in each module. Um so one of those cells goes into thermal runaway. Thermal runaway is the propagation of heat from one cell to the next. Now there's a UL standard nine five forty. Uh which regulates that and regulates what the system has to have for precautions. Um for sprinklers, um even gaseous systems in some circumstances with certain chemistries. Um in certain containers or uh building type systems versus a container. Um so. Fire response right now, and I do have um a response group that I work with, Energy Safety Response Group out of Ohio, ESRG. Um man of Nick Warner, uh he, he has a team there uh that they set fires to these systems every day. Um they collect a hundred percent of their water runoff that goes with those, with, with those fires. So they're, they're very in tune to what a fire looks like, how it acts, how to respond to it. And what the outcomes of certain applications or lack thereof, applications of water. Um reflect in water quality of runoff. There's a couple studies out of Sweden as well as far as battery fire water runoff. Um ESRG right now is working with the electric um. Electric Power Research Institute, EPRI, on actually getting this data set released um as far as. Runoff quality. Um but response right now, if a system was to go on fire for this particular system, now each system's not. Not the same, right? Each chemistry is different, needs to be treated different, acts differently in a fire. That's where the UL nine five forty comes in and regulates how that needs to be looked at as far as. A manufacturing standpoint, as far as a civil standpoint, and as far as a safety standpoint with the fire response. So right now, uh ESRG is advising us um to one, and I can get you a copy of an, an actual letter right now. This isn't a draft form for up here. Um so I've got Nick working on a um. Site-specific document here to kind of help you guys understand what a response might look like in this actual application. Um. So right now, if a, say a module down in the left corner caught on fire, had a cell catch on fire. Um with the testing that has been done on these cells and on these modules, the fire doesn't leave that module. It doesn't leave that container. And so with that. With that heat propagation not really moving that far, lithium ion phosphate has a, has a big surface area. Um the way that the cells are made, that dissipates heat very easily. Um they have not ever seen. A cell go outside of a module, let alone into more than six or seven uh different cells. So. Understanding that other things can happen as well. Uh recommendation is to never put water on these directly. Um it is to surround, to protect your surroundings and let that energy burn out. Um if water did need to be. Addressed for uh an exposure nearby, that's fine. Um it's never recommended to put water directly on. To the battery module itself or inside of the container. Now I know that goes against kind of what I presented already, right? With the sprinklers. Um the sprinklers are part of NFPA eight fifty-five. NFPA eight fifty-five requires um a means for water suppression. That's because NFPA eight fifty-five covers all technology, all chemistries of lithium, of lithium ion batteries, right? So with. These systems, we would be developing an individual ES, ERP, um emergency response plan with the fire department. In conjunction with ESRG. So ESRG, and then we'll just look ahead to the future a little bit. So say we're mechanically complete. At that point in time, ESRG comes out here. Um and goes over the site with the fire department, looks at um potential hazards or anything that might be. Out of the norm, systems change from uh project to project in a little bit different landscape. Um so. They would come down, boots on the ground, um development of the ERP, um as well as hands-on training with fire department. Now to fight a, or I quote unquote fight, um to respond to a fire of this type of system. Uh doesn't require any special gear, doesn't require anything special. It's just a, it's a fire that I know when you look in the news, you see. Uh cars on fire on the side of the road and these fire departments are throwing tens of thousands gallons of water on them. All they're doing is. Is just prolonging the whole thing. They're, they're kind of wasting resources, right? At the same time, it's not doing anything effectively. Um in that instance of a car. With the standalone here, um in the way that these car, the. Way the cars and the way that these standalone units are regulated are a little bit different. Um the UL nine five forty. Creates. That ability for the, the know-how of how that cell propagates heat and, and what that might look like in the long run. Um as far as spreading the fire to a neighboring container. Um also why these containers are built with. Um two areas, um confinement areas for the batteries and they're separated by firewalls. Um but I think. That's kind of a long-winded explanation there, but I wanted to make sure I covered a lot.
Okay, so, so you're saying that uh you will be uh working with the fire departments once these are built? To train them on what they should do if something happens? Is that's what I'm understanding?
That is correct.
Okay. Uh would you consult with them beforehand before we?
Oh, definitely.
Give this approval to get or disapprove.
Yeah.
To get the fire chief's input on a second point, because I don't think.
Definitely.
I think if he had a better understanding, I don't know what his opinion to be more, worse, less.
Yep, um and I will be addressing that with him once I have Nick's um letter back. Um so I do plan on meeting with him.
So probably before we do, you'll be consulting with him before this really gets a.
I, I, yeah, I think, I think before our next meeting, I'd have a conversation with him about what Nick would have as a response. Um recommendation for his department. And their, their response letter, um their letter of. Recommendation for the way that you respond to these systems is something that they give publicly to every municipality. It's not different everywhere they go. It's the same document. It's just fine tuned for this particular project.
Okay. Um if you have done, Mr. Gould, uh Mr. Gould, judge.
I have a few questions. The more layman questions that there are, because we're not engineers, okay? First of all, where is the closest one here in this, around here?
Of energy storage?
Of, of this project.
For standalone energy, um Ashburnham, I bet. Um.
You bet.
Uh well, I say that because standalone energy as. A storage only facility is typically only seen right now in municipalities like Sterling, Ashburnham, Templeton. Um and there's, there's a list of probably fifteen of them that have worked through the ACES grant to have standalone energy storage. Um a lot of the.
I've never heard of it being around here, one of these units like this.
Yep, there, there are energy storage lithium ion battery technology only is out there for right now on solar fields for um. Energy storage, as well as some flywheel stuff, but um for batteries. Uh us as a developer, we have about sixty-five megawatts worth of these batteries across the state right now on solar fields.
Here's another question. You're saying this is ten megawatts. How many watts is ten megawatts?
How many, how many watts?
Yeah.
Can you relate it to something?
Oh, so a megawatt.
That's, that's a forty watt bulb, okay? What, what can you relate that to? Ten megawatts?
Uh to a lightbulb, I don't, I can't comment on that, to be honest with you, to a lightbulb.
I mean, is that what would you take to run half the town or, you know?
Uh I'd, I can get back to you with a better, I don't want to miss, I don't want to misspeak to you because.
I didn't mean to throw it.
Not an electrical engineer either, so it's. But go ahead.
Okay, where is all this energy coming from and how is it going to get there?
Yep, um so.
Because I mean, you, you gotta put up new poles or what street is it coming down or, or you know, three-phase wiring. Is down on Murlock Avenue, but I know when they put up, they put it on a new uh. Solar field. They just ran all new holes down. Down the street to, down Jackson Avenue.
Yep, so the clean peak standard um that the Baker-Polito administration. Uh put forth several years ago, uh two thousand eighteen, I believe. And um that. Aims to put energy storage on the grid where solar is being produced. Um so. As a developer, I look for areas that have high solar, right? Um to go and put energy storage there. So what we're doing. Is that, that solar energy that's being co-created, uh generated during the day from those solar panels, it's getting put on the lines. Um and we're not using that energy efficiently within the grid structure because we're all at work. We use the most energy as humans. From four to nine PM while we're home doing laundry, dishes, watching TV, ACs are on, heats on, um things of that nature, charging cars. You can't charge cars without energy storage on the grid for one, um long-term. Um and so. While the energy is being generated by the solar fields, National Grid and other electric distribution companies. Um have energy storage systems like these being proposed and other ones already here in the state. There's. Two hundred and fifty megawatts in the state already. Um and they allow us to operate while the solar. It, it charges while the solar is producing and it discharges while the solar is not producing. So we can charge during the day and some limited times at night as well. Um and shift that green energy that's being produced during the day and being. Lost through heat loss um on the lines and being able to shift that for a lower cost um. Electricity source during times of high demand, um during winter time, uh during everyday use, really. Um so it's really shaving that peak cost um to allow the energy that's being produced within this localized grid structure. To be utilized within the local grid structure more efficiently and not call on ISO New England who operates the big large transmission lines. That feed these smaller substations in your territories here. So we're charging during the day, discharging at night. And that, that's based off of solar production heavily regulated through uh. National Grid as far as how we can operate these systems.
How much noise does this make? Because now you could put transformers there besides, transformers hum. How about these?
Uh noises.
You forget, like Mr. Gould said, there's a housing project right there.
Yep, yeah, and I can put a decibel ring uh picture together for our next meeting to show you what the decibel will look like at the lot line and where that housing is, is.
I mean, would it be this?
At the property line, I don't want to.
Truck running at night or, you know, how loud does it get, you know, at night? At night, there's noise carries, no matter what.
Yep, um so during the day, I don't think you'd ever hear anything at all over the hum of the vacuum uh at Saloon, but uh. The decibel at a meter for each one of these, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say roughly eighty decibels at a meter. So when you go two meters, it drops X amount. I'll put the ring, the ring picture together so we can look at that together and understand what that sound level looks like. Um but eighty decibels is the, is the rating. Uh things mitigations like fence and screening and stuff like that kind of breaks down that. That travel. Um but I can, I can put something together for decibels so we can actually have a better understanding of what I'm talking about.
I, I need to know noises because of.
Yeah, it's ve, it's very minimal. So these, these, these systems don't operate at a hundred percent ever. Um they're, they're lucky to meet sixty percent through their operating schedule. Um so with that. A typical inverter, if you ever pulled up to a solar field, an inverter on a solar field, they typically do a good buzz all day long because they're. They're ramped up at a hundred percent when the sun's shining. Um these, these inverters, they're, they're at forty-five, fifty percent. Maybe at most at an eighty decibel range at one meter. Um they don't, they're not operating all day long. There's certain windows of operation. Um noise, I can assure you, won't be an issue, but we can, we can discuss it further for sure.
Thank you. Uh you talked about the fence. You said it was a seven foot high fence. You got barbed wire at the top?
No.
That fence ain't hard, ain't high enough. It's just not high enough. At seven feet, you better go two more feet with barbed wire. You get eighty-five kids living in that project. That's a very temptate, tempted, temptation for that area. And it doesn't even have to be the kids from that project. It could be the kids from down the street, anywhere.
From experience, we've never had any problems on any of our solar fields.
I'm not saying you ever did. It's always the first time.
Yep, no, that's, that's okay.
Yeah, that, that is an area where a lot of kids hang out. And you know, young teenager type kids that are destructive. We were ones ourselves.
Talking about maintenance. How many times are you doing maintenance? How many times a week or a month or?
Uh a lot of the maintenance is.
I want to make sure that somebody's from your company, your company is there. Check in on this plate thing every once in a while. In case the fence falls down or something.
Yep, yeah, no, definitely. Um it's monitored twenty-four seven remotely for one.
Right.
Um but as far as regular scheduled maintenance, a lot of it's quarterly. Um there are some bi-monthly. Maintenance items just within the first year of operation and then it goes to quarterly just to make sure everything's operating as it should, right? And it gives it that time for that battery management system to learn what it's doing and they're checking up on that and checking thresholds and tweaking things as needed, right? Um but uh I'm gonna say quarterly, just, just be safe there.
The uh. There's one sentence in, in this letter here, as we, the final design and connections location will be established by the utility provider. And is not under the control of the applicant. So that doesn't necessarily mean it's got to go here.
That, that's speaking to the interconnection equipment and the design of that. Um so we are still intimately working with National Grid on what that design is looking like and what they're, what they are going to require for this site to be connected. Um so we go through the same process with solar fields all the time and it's a typical note that we do because that's something that gets determined. Um at a later step in the process, typically after this planning process. Um but it, it's pretty typical. Um situation where National Grid is in control of that. We don't have control over that.
Thank you for your answers, anyway.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I wanted to touch a little bit.
I'm sure I'm gonna come up with some more, but.
I want to touch a little bit once more. Um so you referenced three-phase lines. So that's what we connect to is three-phase lines. Um just like a solar field does, right off the three-phase lines, you can think of electricity as lo, water kind of in that line. Where if it's getting put on four miles down the road, we can take it off up here at a, at a loss rating, obviously, a little bit, but. Um that's essentially how these systems work.
This is basically like a jumper box.
A what?
Basically like a jumper box where, you know, you need, you need energy, you pull it out.
Yeah, so yeah, you can think of it as, as a um, yeah, as that, you can push the button, right? You can push the button and call on that energy. You can't do that during. During the night with solar, right? So it's taking that renewable energy and being able to push the button and calling on it as an asset.
This is gonna be, basically the solar fields here in town feeding it or from anywhere?
Correct, yeah, no, it, it would all be drawn out of the localized grid. Um eventually, not right now. Um the state will be moving to offshore wind in the way that the electricity companies have been. Um moving towards was having offshore wind off the Cape, being directed all the way up here, all the way through New England. Um and out west a little bit from here in Massachusetts, from the Cape um off of Martha's Vineyard. With battery banks along the way, um up the transmission line. So eventually with. So eventually with the clean peak energy standard, it's going to allow you to charge during wind hours. So it works like you buy the credits from the wind as you get, so there are other ways that they can charge from, through policy.
Thank you.
Now, uh, just to, uh, on one of his questions, will the lines that are there now handle the electricity that's going back and forth or will you have to put in new lines?
Uh, that's being looked at right now with grid. Uh, I can say they will be upgraded, uh, through our process. Um, the, like, the three-phase lines, there will be a little bit of upgrades going on. Right now with National Grid, this area is in what they call a CIP study, uh, capital investment project area. Um, so in a quick, quick way of looking at it, there's a bunch of projects in with National Grid for this area. They have a high capacity rating, the lines can't handle it. Um, we get a interconnection service agreement from National Grid that has an astronomical interconnection price. Department of Energy Resources requires National Grid to put capital into the investment. Um, so right now, they're looking at what they're going to put into, um, for their capital into the project area as far as infrastructure upgrades, substation upgrades and things of that nature. Um, so there will be upgrading happening, not just as a result of this one project, but as of a group of projects up in this general area, um, feeding off of the Winchendon and East Westminster substations.
So basically you're saying that you will be upgrading maybe Murdoch Avenue, Pearl Street, the lines along those? As I understand what you're saying.
It would depend exactly where, uh, and that, that's determined through this study process with National Grid and, and what those extensive upgrades need to or not look like. Um, so these projects have to follow the CIP as they're bound by the tariff because it has already started, but we are working with National Grid on long-term solutions where they're, because energy storage is supposed to be a no wires approach to infrastructure upgrades. So it's supposed to be add energy storage within the grid structure. You're not upgrading lines, you're not upgrading transformers at the substation and creating these twenty, thirty million dollar upgrades. So it's, it's supposed to be a nice non, non-wires approach to infrastructure upgrades and system capacity and resiliency within the grid structure. Um, so we are working with them right now on long-term solutions for, um, it's a, it's a management kind of system where the substation talks to the batteries and allows the battery to understand what's on the line at any given time so it can operate freely in that aspect. Um, but that's, that's a couple of years out. We're working with them on a pilot right now for that.
But, but for this one here, you're basically, you're saying you don't know if they will be upgrading-
They're a hundred percent will be upgraded, yes. I don't know where-
Before you get online, they'll upgrade, uh, link, uh, Murdoch Avenue and maybe Pearl Street or whichever direction they go.
Correct, to the substation, most likely, along the way. It, it depends on where the lines are upgraded already, so I can't really speak to exactly where, right? Um, but through the process of National Grid, they dictate what they have to do.
Yeah, I'm looking at the aesthetics of it.
Yep.
You know, the lines coming in, you know?
Yep. Yeah, I think the lines that are coming up Murdoch are relatively new.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
One more question. I was thinking here. You said if this thing catches on fire or these batteries catch on fire, you just let them burn? You don't try and put them out?
Right now, that is the response, is to let the energy burn out because it's not going to take the whole-
My question, that goes with that because you, you were saying there's a test area where they're doing this, they're burning them and letting them burn and see how long it go. Does this, what kind of, uh, air quality comes out of that? I mean, is it, uh, going to be toxic or?
So with any fire, it's toxic, right? I mean, you got black smoke in a house fire, you got more toxins come out of a house fire than most anything. Um, but yes, to- smoke is toxic in nature, so yes, the answer is yes.
I'm just looking for the area, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have some questions. Um, you said that you weren't sure where the nearest area of storage like this was near to us. My question is, are those like way off out in the woods somewhere? Are they near populated areas?
The most energy storage that I've seen are near populated areas. Uh, Templeton, I believe, is right on the main street, um, but I don't know exactly where. I'll find out for you.
Yeah.
Ashburnham has one with their substation, Sterling has one with their substation, um, Taunton, other areas all around. I have, I can get a list of where they are as a standalone project, but energy storage is everywhere in Massachusetts on solar fields. And when I say everywhere, there are thousands of sites with energy storage throughout this state.
Yeah, all our solars now have been retrofitting themselves with battery storage.
Correct, through the SMART initiative.
Um, so-
Go ahead, yes.
Also, has there been an environmental impact study done? Like how many acres of land are you clearing to put these in? Um, what about water testing for the runoff from these? Is it polluted water that's running into our basins, going into our wastewater? Do we know?
So water runoff from the site is just wat- typical rainwater. Um, there's no release of anything during operation of these systems, um, and as I mentioned-
Hundred percent sure of that?
What's that?
I said you're a hundred percent sure of that? There's been studies done that it's not contaminated after it hits the batteries?
No, there's no liquid that comes out of these systems.
Uh, what you may say about the run-up is okay, but for, uh, but for point of information, the, uh, uh, elevation of your project is a thousand feet above sea level. Rose Pond is not. It's right below it. And one other point I want to make, most of you have got one of these things. They're powered by a lithium battery. They catch on fire and you all know it.
Oh, yeah, you get a hot pocket. How long does this, how long does the system last?
Uh, so the system, the way that these will operate, the batteries, duration, I guess, life expectancy of a battery is anywhere from fifteen to thirty years, depending on chemistry, um, depending on the usage. We're, we're looking at a twenty-year, um, use of the battery.
And then what's going to happen to them?
They get disposed of. There are, there're, so there are many recycling companies right now, um, ramping up for recycling specifically lithium ion phosphate batteries in the states. Um, so there is an interesting new market in the United States. Um, there's a company out of New York, Rochester, New York called LI Cycle, Li Cycle. Um, they are creating a hub-and-spoke system throughout the country, um, to, at the end of life, these systems, they get broken down into the modules, they put, get put on pallets. The modules go to these facilities, they break them down, they create raw materials and they're turning around and making batteries from them. So there are six or seven facilities now, Georgia, Arizona, um, some other southern states right now. New York being a big hub for this as well for them. Um, but there are many places to recycle batteries. And as, as the industry evolves and as the, these recycling plants get up with their government funding going on with them, they're going to be looking for batteries to recycle, um, so.
Good, thank you.
Um, also, we were talking about extra equipment that the town might have to have in case of fighting a fire. What about special training that the fire department might need? Who's going to be responsible for that? Would the town be responsible for their own training for the fire department to fight a potential fire? And then another question, um, who is responsible if something goes wrong with this? Who's going to pay for the cleanup? Who's responsible if something should happen?
That would be us, um, as, that there would be a DAP problem, right, right, for, um, so that would be us as a company to take on as far as-
Yeah, because in the packet I got, there was a contract signed by this Peter Salum, I believe.
Yeah.
And item seven of, on that contract said that he was responsible for everything.
No.
Uh, that's what I read.
On a contract with Salum?
Yep.
That they're, they're not-
It was in my packet of information that I got.
I'd have to see the document, but we can follow up on it for sure because they're not a hundred percent. Their liability is not anything to do and I could provide a copy of a ground lease to you guys to kind of assure you on that as well, um, and all the indemnifications on us.
Do you have a question, Ed?
Go ahead. At the end of the life of these batteries, uh, do you replace the batteries or do you shut the whole system down? End it.
Yep, so end of life, um, so we'll get, we'll jump ahead to like a decom situation, right? Um, so end of life, say the system's done, batteries are twenty years old, they're not really optimal anymore. We want to eventually come back to you probably to repower. We'd be back in front of you upon any of that. Um, so these containers, they come as you're looking at it right here. They're already pre-packed from the manufacturer, pre-wired from the manufacturer. Um, they get, they're delivered on a fifty-five-foot truck and they get taken off with the crane and put on a concrete pad, um, about an eight-hour wire install, torque specs, all that good stuff. So we would pick up the container and get rid of the container as a whole and bring in a whole new container. There's no handling of batteries on site or any hazardous material on site, ever.
Where are these made?
The containers themselves. Um, the containers are made from Su- by Sungrow. Um, it's a company out of China right now, so, out of China. Um, so right now, as I kind of led into, the United States is in that position, right? Batteries all come from China for everything that we own. Um, so moving to the future with the ability for the United States to recycle batteries that are now here, eventually we will be a producer of batteries ourselves.
Um, you had mentioned that, uh, you would be moving the runoff across the street into a rain gardens and such. Now, do you also have that project across the street, uh, that will be coming in? Are you the same company?
Correct.
So you'll be moving it on to that site and then, uh, hopefully it'll be all absorbed on that site. If not, any runoff would end up in, uh, Rose Pond?
Different, um, different parcels.
Yes.
Correct, um, different sites. Um, so I do want to say like, uh, when you're going up Murdoch, on the right-hand side is where the system would be and on the left-hand side is where the drainage feature is. And for the other project, it's well, well north of there, well north. It's up beyond the building.
Didn't they, um, oh, it's beyond the building. I thought it showed him on either side of Lincoln Avenue.
Yeah, it's to the north of the backside of the building.
So you're just bringing it across the street and going to rain gardens on that side of the property there?
Correct.
Now, is this all the same property or are they different lots?
Five lots.
Inside the street that you're bringing it on and-
Yeah, they're different. There's five lots altogether. There's two lots for this project, there's three lots for the other one. Just the way that the drainage is currently wrapped into other properties.
And so the storage energy will be on lot twenty-six and the dr- the runoff will be on twenty-five?
Correct.
Yep, okay.
Because on your locus here, it shows, uh, one lot on, uh, the east side of Murdoch Avenue and then, uh, it shows one lot on the west side of Murdoch Avenue.
Yeah.
So this is all this one project is there?
West side is drainage, east side is the project.
Yeah, encompasses both sides of the street.
Otherwise, I would have been in a burrow. Uh, do we have any other questions from the board?
Not right now.
I'll sit.
Well, I don't think we have any questions at this time, but as I told you, that we actually on a lot of these projects, not just this one, but a lot of projects, we wait till conservation, uh, makes their decision because that's the basic underlying, uh-
Certainly.
Things that, that happen, so, um, do you have any questions of us? Anything you'd like to know?
Uh, no, I think my to-do list is fire chief, uh, and looking at the sound, um, and as well as some lists of other areas where you guys might be able to even actually see something closer to here, um, just as a system.
And may I just add, Amanda, uh, Templeton Municipal Light is on Bridge Street in Baldwinville. Yep, so in the, um, I believe senior housing and the senior centers right across the street. Yep.
Oh, and that's where the battery storage is, storage is, oh, right down there?
Yes.
Behind the fire sta- or the old fire station?
No.
No, it's, um-
Bridge Street.
On Bridge Street, yeah. By the senior housing and then senior centers out back.
Wrong bridge.
Like right back behind the old Temple Stewart's.
Okay, now I know, yes.
Yep, yep. And then Ashburnham has their municipal light company off of, um, is it, um-
Cory Hill Road?
What's that?
Cory Hill Road.
It's South Ash Road.
So the light company is there, but is the battery surge there as well?
Yes, and Templeton it is. I can't speak for Ashburnham, but I do know where it's located. But, yeah, Templeton, it's right there.
There's one in Sterling, I'm shocked. That's in kind of a commercial district right there, but just for reference.
Do, do you have anything else, uh, Nicole or?
I do not, no. I'll be talking to Chief Smith tomorrow too, in reference to this meeting that you'll be getting with him.
Yeah, I'll definitely be following up with him for sure.
The hearing be closed.
Or, or continued?
Continued, we're going to continue the hearing.
I said, move the hearing be closed.
Uh, we have a motion. Does anybody want to second a motion to close the hearing? Uh, now the motion fails, Burke. Uh, now, you wanted to continue the hearing to what date?
I would like to continue the hearing to honor about June twentieth. That's our, um, conservation. I don't feel that a DEP number is going to be issued, um, by May eleventh because they're backed up right now at DEP, so I feel June eighth, we probably will have a DEP number. So, and that would make our planning board meeting June twentieth, so we can try to shoot for June twentieth dependent upon whether or not this project can be heard by the Conservation Commission, which they will not hear the project unless there is a DEP number attached to it.
Let me get my, um, so we're looking at May-
June twentieth.
June twentieth.
I'm getting there. Uh, it'd be, uh, Tuesday, June twentieth at six oh five?
Six oh five, correct.
Okay, uh, I'd entertain a motion to continue this hearing to June twentieth at six oh five P M.
So moved.
To continue the hearing to June twentieth.
Good, to continue this hearing.
This hearing, yes.
This hearing.
Okay, this hearing, okay.
And we're also-
Six oh five on the twentieth of June.
Twentieth of June, correct.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and second. Do you have any comments, objections? Otherwise I'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye and it's continued to June twentieth and hopefully everybody will have all their ducks in a row.
Sounds good. Thank you all.
Thank you for coming.
You did a good job.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we want, we get to know a little bit more now.
Okay. We've already done the Plust- Planning Assistance Grant letter, so the other, other last item is adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Don't all rush. Okay, I have a motion and who wants to be second?
I'll second.
Okay, Les will be second for a change and I'll be first.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and we are adjourned.